Call the order for a Watertown City Council meeting for December 2nd of 2024. Please rise while the Watertown Fire Department Chaplain Hank Rosso leads us in prayer.
Thank you. It's been so long. Since I've been here, I'd look up the address to see where I was supposed to go, but I've been praying for you guys. Heavenly fathers, we come to you today. We are blessed in so many ways. In this season of being thankful, we take so much for granted in our great community and the wonderful people that live here, work here, and serve here. Lord, we're mindful of this time of year when there's hazards with space heaters and house fires and traffic accidents with bad weather. And we're thankful that as you watch over us, you use our law enforcement, our first responders, the firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs to protect us and help us in so many ways, and oftentimes sacrificing themselves in their own needs. We lift up them to you and ask for safety and protection. We pray that you minister to their families and fill those hearts and calm those fears and let it be a season of peace, Lord. We thank you for this time and recognize it's a time of transition, but we know that you know all things. You're not caught by surprise by anything and that you're large and in charge. And so, we thank you for all these things, for wisdom, understanding, and unity and right spirit here this evening. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim city manager, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Holene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The quorum is established. Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda, but with two additions. So adding to the end, we are going to make it official, the formation of the succession planning committee. I know that I announced that last week, but I just, I spoke too early and we actually have to make that official via a city council vote. So I will add that at the end. And then I will also ask for a motion at that time for another committee, which is going to be a midterm review, which I will explain that more at the time. So with those changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any debate on that? Hearing none, the motion is to accept the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on the agenda, now is your time to do so. I'll close the open forum and go straight into. Item 8A is a 2024 bridge inspection report to the council. City Engineer Justin Peterson, could you please explain this one to us?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the CD, Civil Design, Inc. does inspections of our roughly half hour bridges. And at the end of the year, they give a presentation to council. So that's what Chris Brozak is going to do. Chris Brozak is from Civil Design, Inc.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Counselors. Chris Brozak with Civil Design out of Brookings. Here just to provide an overall summary like I've done in years past as part of our necessary work order requirements with South Dakota DOT. So this year in 2024, we completed six different structures for the city of Watertown. Watertown has 11 MBIS structures owned and maintained. And those six that were inspected this year were up for inspection. And those inspections were completed on September 9th of this year. An MBIS structure again is just any, any bridge or box culvert or multiple pipe segment that spans greater than 20 feet in total length. So anything less than that on your guys' system is not something we're doing inspection on. Typically, bridges are inspected every 24 months and box culverts are inspected every 24 or 48 months, depending on the certain criteria that they fall under. Along with the inspection, we generate extensive reporting that details, you know, any deficiencies within that structure, along with any recommended repair, rehab, or any future replacement planning for the future. Summary and review meeting was completed with Engineering Department back on November 14th. And just as a reminder to the council and the public, this is just an inspection of the overall structural integrity of the bridge, defects, approaches to the bridge, nothing related to drainage, hydraulics, or anything to that effect. Here's a map that highlights the six structures and their respective locations within the city. The six highlighted in red are the six structures that we completed. Overall, the six structures, three of them were bridges and three of them were concrete box culverts. The first three structures that we inspected are shown at the top. And one over 10th Avenue, a concrete box culvert. The second structure, another box culvert on the 20th Avenue South Bypass. And structure carrying South Broadway over the Big Sioux River just north of the Glacial Lakes rail loop. Big takeaways here was that the structures are overall in relatively good condition. The structure on South Broadway, 15184181, that one's one of the older ones that we're inspecting of the six. And that one, we just have to continue to monitor the plumbness of the abutments to make sure we don't have any continued movement. Has there, has been some previous movement in the past identified. Overall, just minor maintenance repair items necessary for each structure. All of these structures are acceptable for legal loads without any need for any load postings or weight restrictions. So no changes expected there as well, following our inspection. Same story on the second pair of three. 184186 is also on the 20th Avenue South Bypass, another box culvert just south of Glacial Lakes rail loop. And then east of the roundabout on the bypass, a bridge, single span bridge. And then the last bridge that we inspected this year was on Willow Creek. And crosses over Willow Creek as well. Again, just minor repair maintenance items needed on these structures. Overall, most of these structures also were replaced within the last 15, 20 years. So overall, the, the condition of these is in pretty good shape. As I mentioned, we provide a detailed bridge inspection report for each one of these structures. This also just provides a general summary of each structure, noting when it was inspected, you know, where it's located. And then any load posting requirements, as you can see, nothing's needing to be posted. I don't anticipate that happening on any of these anytime soon. And then minor repair items that were identified for each structure. That is all I have for the bridge inspection update. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys do have about any of our findings.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and this may not be for you, Chris, I'm going to throw this out. So we have some minor repairs that are needed. How are they typically handled in regards to budgeting for those, engineering to make sure that we got whatever requirements are and then to get the work done? How does that normally handle? What kind of timeframes are suggested for those types of things?
Our street, street division takes on those, those repairs. And it's part of their, their street maintenance budget. It's, they're all relatively minor stuff and, or signage, that kind of thing. It falls under the budget.
Any follow up?
No.
Councilman Jerrance?
Thanks, Mayor. I see the South Broadway as a subject matter tonight. And I'm wondering, where do we start and stop spending money on a bridge that's taking us nowhere?
I don't know how to answer that one. The, it's a city, city-owned structure, so we're maintaining it. The-
Councilman Jerrance, just so that everyone knows, this is the bridge by Little River City, which was South Broadway back before it was closed for the train tracks. Just for anyone to know.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. I'd have to do a little bit more research if there, if there is a way to transfer ownership to someone. I don't know who that would be, probably the business, I suppose, but-
Just quick follow up. I, I see it's, I mean, of the bridges that are in this report, it's probably the one that is required to have more things. I mean, it's bridge markers. It's, I mean, like, okay, this one, does anybody even use it? I mean, does a fire department need it? Is, where does the grain, the grain business, it used to be HESCO, I don't even know what it's called, are they still using it, needing it? That's it. No big deal.
It's a good, any further questions, counsel? All right. Hearing none, thank you so much for coming in, for letting us know.
Thank you, counselors.
Item 9A is an approval of a change order for the pickleball facility, project 2408, with Timmins Construction Incorporated, for an increase of roughly $18,000. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, the final change order for the adjustment of the final quantities related to the pickleball facility. It's fairly routine for change orders at the end of projects. The total project cost with the approval of this change order comes in at $605,000, just over $605,000. The, the Pickleball Association did pay a portion of that, that cost to tune about $264,000. So that leaves the city, city portion about $341,000. I'll stand by for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the change order. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Jerrance. Open it up for conversation. Any questions, counsel? Councilman Peters?
Is this the last change order for the project? I might have missed that.
Yes, it is.
So this completes it entirely?
The, the quantities are complete. There is some, like, final seeding that will happen in the spring, but other than that, the project is done. Yes.
The seeding, is that still shared between the Pickleball Association or does that fall on the city? Is that, was that in this original budget? I'm sorry, Justin, I'm kind of drawing a blank here.
It, the, it was all part of the, the project, so.
It was included?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Jerrance?
Thanks, Mayor. I can't let this go without remembering the small group of people walking into many offices and businesses across Watertown, marching and asking for monies and dollars to get this prioritized. And in a period where we are, one of our next priorities as a council is to look at other projects that are kind of similar to this, but the amount of money and the percentage that this group put into this project shouldn't go unnoticed tonight.
And thank you for mentioning that because the facility would not have been built when it was, and probably not as nice as it was without the participation from the Pickleball Association here in Watertown and their dedicated volunteers. Any further conversation on this?
Maybe we could do that for some bridges?
The comment was, maybe we could do that for some bridges. I suppose if you played pickleball on a bridge, then maybe. All right. Any further questions or comments? The motion is to approve the change order. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. And Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance to supplement the 2024 budget for various departments and projects and state and federal grant appropriations. Finance Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it is that time of year. I have reached out to department heads and had them review their budgets, also to kind of anticipate if you're getting kind of close to stop. I will say that a number of the items that are listed on here were approved throughout the year by a council action, but this is just that final kind of ordinance that takes it in. Some of them also do have a revenue that is offsetting, but by state law, we do have to stay within our expenditure budget. So this just kind of brings that budget up. The way we approve our budget, we do, in the general fund, we go by department. So sometimes some of these smaller departments need kind of small adjustments in the hopes that they won't need it, but we just want to make sure we have that authority there. I won't probably go into any specifics unless the council wants, but everything I kind of see is pretty standard. You know, we have our, sometimes insurance premiums come in a little bit higher based off of if new equipment was purchased and we just weren't anticipating that cost. Otherwise, sometimes too, on the payroll side of things, if we have people that retire or leave and get a payout, that has an adjustment that's necessary as well. So without any further, I guess if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions. Counsel? Councilman Danforth?
Surprise. Most of these, as I look these over, I, I get them. I do understand. Actually, I'd sent an email. Do you know what the, so does this represent everything for the whole year to date?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the net bottom line here as to what we are supplementing?
It is totaled by fund. The one thing that I wouldn't do is incorporate any of the tiffs, but if I just do a quick for, what do we got? Probably around that 4 million, all in, all funds. I will point out that in Fund 212, you will see a $1.5 million expense. That is actually to write off the inter-fund loan for TIF number two. That, we dissolved that one, and that was one that had an inter-fund loan between Fund 212 and 280. So it's kind of, it's more of an accounting adjustment, but I do have to make that adjustment to the expense because it wasn't receivable.
So as I look at some of these things, like, one that stands out is banking services, for example. We have, within the general fund, an added $35,000 expense, if I go down, and I didn't go through all these, but in park and rec, it's almost, it's $48,500. Again, banking services that we didn't apparently budget for, plan for. Can you explain this, please?
So the banking services, it's a little bit misleading. What that is, is that's actually the fees we pay to process credit cards. So we have looked into that and you will see that we are now going with a different credit card processor, that we can recoup some of those fees, as well as they're a little bit lower. So we did recognize that that was becoming a pretty significant expense and we're now adjusting it for your 2025. So we should see those go down.
Because don't we charge back to the person or persons a fee?
Under, under our current way, we were not. And now going forward, we will. We will be charging those and then processing credit cards that way. So, yep.
Right. And then a couple of the other ones were temporary salaries, for example.
Mm-hmm.
How, some, you know, and I'm going to pick on one, not that I'm picking on it. It's an example, temporary salaries at the golf course. $46,000. How do we not budget closer on our labor demand, whether it's time, part-time? And that's just one example. There's, there's some of those that are in here.
I do know in terms for, the one, the other one was, there was $52,000 within park systems. I do know that we did increase some mowing, and I know Dusty is here and he can speak a little bit to that. We did increase some tournaments, which had some more field time that we had to get things ready for. But yes, temporary is probably one of the, the areas that, and I do think with the way we did the new budget, the 2025, I think we did spend a little bit more time really diving into what those actual numbers would be. Golf course, I think-
Yeah, if, if I can explain that.
You go ahead.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. The golf course one was, we were unable to fill a full-time position. So that is offset in the, the full-time budget, but we retained additional seasonal staff because we were short the manpower of the, the full-time position. I said, yeah, the parks one, we did a record number of state softball, baseball tournaments this year. Additionally, the park staff was part of the operational staff of having ice for the summer. We hadn't anticipated that. So that, and we had a tremendously wet spring. So. Any others?
All right. Well, yeah, the one thing about that, that would actually be kind of nice here is to know where we do have an offset, right? If we're only seeing the expense, it would be nice to know the other side of that versus just the end. I mean, because the end result of this is the approximate $4 million, right? What we're not seeing is maybe X dollars are coming back to offset that.
Correct.
Just in the future, that would be nice to have. So, thank you.
Councilman Peters?
I'm looking at TIF number five here, and it says, it's on the bottom of page three. TIF taxes, current, 235,000. Then it says interest, and then it says contributions. But I'm looking at the rest of these tiffs, and I don't see an interest category. Can you maybe walk me through what that means?
Yep. So TIF number five was one of our last tiffs that we had done. The city had done the work, so this is our other one with an inter-fund loan to Fund 212. So what that one is doing is just paying back the interest to Fund 212. And that was one of our overlap tiffs. So TIF 19 is actually overlapping TIF 5. So that one now is split between its inter-fund loan payment to 212 and then also the contribution to the new developer.
What project is TIF 5?
TIF 5 is First Avenue, Willow, I don't know, people call it different things. It's the extension out.
Willow Creek.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Bueller? Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned we don't, we don't charge for credit card usage?
We were not charging those fees back to the, to the user.
Because we do at the golf course.
On some, we do.
I mean.
Not on everything. So like Finance Department was not. Golf course is running off of a different credit card agreement than what the rest, some of the others.
Because I know we do out there.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Councilman Tupper?
Mine's not a question, just a comment. I spent a lot of time at softball fields this summer, and Dusty, your guys did a tremendous job. They really looked good, and I want to thank you, your help for that. They just did an outstanding job, some of the best work I've seen in years, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Council. We'll see that back at the next meeting. Item 11A is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to Magic LLC doing business as Legends at 825 Third Street Southwest. Interim City Manager Bobzine?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council, will be a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine. This did pass the Board of Adjustments for approval, it was brought to them, and all fees and notices are in order. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? All right. I'll close the public hearing. Open it up for council action. Can you get a motion to approve the application? Motion made by Councilman Jurens, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Tupper?
This one's kind of a struggle for me because we have a family entertainment center that now we're going to allow them to sell beer. Not only is it a family entertainment center, but it's right across from our aquatic center. I know I've visited with the Chief Toomey and Assistant Chief Remmers. Ryan, could I ask you to come up for a second? I just, I just kind of struggle with this one, with the family entertainment center, so what kind of?
Officer Remmers?
Sure.
Or Assistant Chief Remmers?
I've been called worse. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, as Councilman Tupper said, Chief Toomey, and he had had some discussions about this, I've also had some discussions with Chief Toomey. He was unable to be here tonight, but asked me to come and just kind of explain what his position is and in the same regard, like what the Police Department's position is in this. While the Police Department doesn't want to stand in the way of a small business being innovative and doing something that has the potential to be good for their business, we do find that it's our obligation as a police department to just at least point out to you guys, and I know that you know this too, that, that there could potentially be some problems associated with adding alcohol to what is otherwise a family-oriented business and a longstanding business in town that I'm sure you've all enjoyed the fun times there, as I have when my kids are littler too, but for the most part, we identified four kind of main reasons why we think this might not be the best course of action for that given location. One is just a safety concern. When you're mixing alcohol along with operating a motor vehicle, which a golf cart is, you got some potential for, or not a golf cart, a go-kart, it's some potential for some accidents and some injuries, and it's technically, it's against the law too, to operate a motor vehicle while under the influence of alcohol. Number two is just that, that slow erosion of a family-friendly environment. This might just be one more place in town that has transitioned from a place that I might want to take my young kids to a place that I might not want to anymore if I'm going to see intoxicated people there. Number three, just a negative impact on the nearby facilities. This is speaking mostly toward the, the Family Aquatic Center right next door. Typically, as a governing body, you guys might not allow a bar next to a park or next to a church or something, so just that, that slow erosion of the surrounding area, that's the potential for that there. And then just a negative impact on children. Anytime that we add an alcohol establishment and kind of normalize that for young children, it's just slowly chipping away at what is, what we would like to have children grow up, maybe not seeing that on such a regular basis, so that when they get to an age where they're making those decisions themselves to drink alcohol or not drink alcohol, they're maybe making a better choice than what happens if this just becomes normalized to an extent that family fund centers are now allowing alcohol. So that all being said, we don't want to stand in the way of progress, like I said earlier, but our obligation to point that out as a police department, I'm sure that you're very well aware of all the points that I just made, but that's our stance on the issue.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Councilman Tupper, the floor is yours.
In no way do I want to make this an attack on the integrity of the people that are taking that over, but, and thank you, Assistant Chief, for that information. It just, I could say this, I usually don't struggle with many licenses, but I just really struggle with this one. It's just, you know, the more that we put our youth in, in that situation where they're around alcohol, the more chance they have of having something happen in the future. And just the liability, I don't know how, how they would even handle this, and maybe they, they do, I'm sure they, they have good plans in place, but as Assistant Chief Remmers said, it is, a go-kart is a motorized vehicle and against state law to operate while intoxicated, so I would think that would be a great liability, so just my, my views, so, thank you.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you for your, your input tonight, Assistant Chief. That, one of the concerns I had was the, the go-karts and how that all works with the alcohol use before even this evening. Also, there was, you know, during the public hearing, we weren't able to hear the, you know, the applicant's point of view, because when we do this, when we, we like to listen to the applicant's point of view and pros and cons, that's how we make good decisions here. And so just based off of tonight and what we're, what we're receiving for information, the work that the police, that the Police Department has done to help, help us see one view, that doesn't mean that that's our, our standard we're going to go with, but it does say something, we should, we should put some weight into, into what we're hearing tonight in our decision. And so just hearing what, what our Police Department has done, not hearing anything on the other side of it, and there are some good points that I would agree with, so as of right now, I'm just based off the information, I might be voting with, against this particular applicant.
Thank you. Are you Mr. Weisner?
Yes.
Okay, could I ask, Councilman Peters had raised his hand, so I could wait for, okay, so, and I'll allow it because you're here, and I'm sure during the public hearing, you weren't sure what to necessarily say, so I will give you your say right now if you want to. So, Mr. Weisner, just get up and, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yeah, Weisner, yep.
Okay. And just, so we have Kyle Weisner, who is the applicant.
Yep, representing Magic LLC. So our thought to add beer only to this establishment, really following in the footsteps of the Thunder Road in Aberdeen, the Thunder Road in Sioux Falls, places like Dave and Buster's, and something in our research, it's, it's very common amongst family entertainment centers. We absolutely don't want this to be a bar, and honestly, when it's called a bar, I really want to reiterate that this is an entertainment center. The hours will look like a family entertainment center, and the beer would be served as a concession well out of the way. So anybody that is going there with their family that doesn't want to entertain it, it will not be in your face. It'll be off in a corner by the food. Very similar, I don't know if you've been to the Thunder Road in Sioux Falls, but very similar to that, where it's kind of, you make an effort to go to the food and beverage area. On the other point with go-karts, it's something that, that I took very seriously. I recently took a trip down to Orlando to a Family Entertainment Center Expo, it's their biggest one of the year, and that was one of the main questions I asked other owners and businesses, and came back with a ton of ideas on how others do it. So there's wristbanding, there's zero tolerance. You actually can put in your point of sale system how many beers an individual has had, and then that registers with the person running the go-kart track, and you can see if they've had beers. Sorry, no carts today. And we haven't decided exactly how we want to do that, but that, that's something that we've taken very seriously, and we understand that it's our responsibility to, to keep the cart area clean of beer. So really, wrapping it all up, we're viewing the beer as more of a concession than a bar or a change of venue or changing it from a family entertainment center, no more than the SSU ice cream that we're going to serve as a new concession item. So that's where the thought process behind it is.
Councilman Peters?
Yeah, thank you. Well, you kind of hit on what I was going to touch on here a little bit, and that is, ironically enough, this year for our company Christmas party, we're going to a place that throws axes and knives at walls while you can drink beer. So it's, it's a little bit interesting to hear kind of this argument. And the, the thing I was going to say is that these axe-throwing places, they monitor how many drinks you can have per hour, and I want to say it's like one beer an hour or something like that. It could be more, but I want to say it's one beer. So will you guys, and it sounds like you will, have something in place that only allows you to drink so much at one time? Because as you can imagine, as a place, you know, like with axe and knife throwing, they don't want you to have three beers an hour, and they don't encourage that. Could you maybe talk us through what a policy would look like?
Yep, absolutely. And we've had a lot of discussions, we haven't fully decided on how we're going to do it, but we're somewhere between zero tolerance and one or two beverages, knowing that you would still be under the legal limit to drive a vehicle at one or two beers. Have not decided on that, but it is, like I mentioned, our point of sale system can actually track it, so you'll have a racer profile that pulls up as you go down to the cart, and right in there, it'll show what they did in the concession area, if you're at your one or two limit, or if we go zero tolerance, it's if you have one, no carts.
Okay.
So yeah, it, it is our, the system that we've signed up for can absolutely track it per individual.
Yeah, okay. Well, and I would just say to round out my comments, I appreciate the Police Department's perspective on this, because quite frankly, I wasn't thinking that way coming into this meeting tonight of some things we should be aware of, but it's hard to know where to draw the line, and, you know, what, what businesses we would allow to serve alcohol to and what we wouldn't, and, you know, deeming what a family-friendly place is, I don't know, is, is my responsibility as a councilperson, more so than we're trying to promote growth in the community and, and responsible growth. And I think that this fits the bill for that, but I do appreciate both sides of the coin on this.
Would anyone like to speak before Councilman Shuddy speaks a second time? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not advocating anything here, but just, just observing this, the real issue is its proximity to the pool. It really isn't about go-karts, it really isn't. We as a city have a family-friendly environment called Cattail Crossing that we sell beer and alcohol in, and, and people drive motorized vehicles all the time there. So, and I have been told over the years, and I agree, that that, that is what helps facilitate the success that we have there and the enjoyment there. So really, it, to me, it comes down to, let's, let's look at what we're doing as a practice. Now granted, we're not, not close to a, a direct city park, but that, that's really what it comes down to, is it an appropriate place as it relates to our park, our pool, and, and the kids and such that, that frequent that. The rest of it is no different than what we're already doing as a city, in my opinion, at Cattail Crossing as an example. So I, I think that's the discussion we need to have.
Anyone would like to speak before Councilman Shuddy a second time? Councilman Jurens?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the world of litigation, a lot of times drives the market and decisions that business owners make, and I'm, I'm struggling with this being put on my shoulders as legislating against good business practices. So, I mean, that's one side of it. Not only at the golf course, but a lot of other family entertainment centers such as the hockey rink, there's alcohol served there too. So it's good to hear Officer Remmers, Assistant Chief Remmers's thoughts. I hadn't thought of some of those things, but those are just a couple of thoughts I've got on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Beeler, do you have anything?
Yeah, just have one question. This would be for City Attorney. If we could, are there any issues at all, Lisa, with liability in the case of the go-karts? Since we own that property?
We own the land, but the business operations and the insurance to cover those operations are with the leaseholder, which is, and also, we do put some parameters related to the alcohol, beer and wine license, I should say, in the lease that was previously approved as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So City Attorney, I just want to make it clear, so the city is not at risk?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a comment to enter into the debate. I don't want to have the final word because this is more of a debate topic, but I understand it's hard to draw the line and understand the concerns. However, the concern that a business that is trying to make it in our community is buy a city-owned facility where children are present, to me, is probably more palatable than an actual city-owned entity like the golf course, softball complex, ice arena, where we as a city actually own it and openly promote it and sell it. So if we're going to allow it as a city, I guess in this case, I will be supporting it. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with you on that point as far as location. I mean, I, so you put it well, I, I'm with you on that. For me personally, it's, it would be the age that we are marketing this, you know, as a family fun place, and again, as Councilman Jurens brought up, or even Councilman Peters, about what's our job as a council to govern in these areas. Obviously, at some degree, it must be, that's why it's on, crossed our desk, so, you know, that's, that's, that's the way our system is set up right now, right? So we do have to make a decision one way or the other. As far as being a, a, a family-oriented business, and I do appreciate what you're doing there, by the way, as far, and being here tonight to share, because that helps our discussion, you being able to share, you brought some light from your perspective that I, you know, was able to take in and understand a little bit better. But, so in that process, you know, when we look at the age group, youth, the, you know, under 18 or whatever age group, you know, some of these places we're talking about, the golf course isn't marketed really towards the, you know, the younger age group, as much as there's high schoolers that, that, that golf there, there's even high school tournaments, but I don't believe, do we sell alcohol at the golf course during a, when the, when the youth are there having a youth event? Does anyone have that, that, an answer to that question?
Yeah, we do.
We do? Okay, so that's interesting. So then, like, then I go to the ice arena, you know, where there's been discussions, do we allow alcohol for during, for the high school age group? Where do we draw the line as far as what we want to see as a city as far as this, this type of establishment, this type of service, alcohol sales with the, the younger generation? So that's, that's just where I'm still looking at it from that perspective, as far as, as much as we maybe do it in one entity, does that mean that two wrongs, two wrongs make a right? You know, so can we use that as a standard? Maybe, I guess, we can, of course we can, but is it right to use that as a standard? Because, so then do we just keep going and, and have alcohol sales for the hockey arena for the youth events? Do we just keep on, you know, where do we just keep going as a, because then we are setting a precedent. So that's just my perspective yet this evening.
Councilman Tupper?
I'd like to ask the, my fellow councilmen, if, if somebody wanted to put up a bar on the other side of the pool on that other street, would we oppose it? Because I've seen it opposed in, not so many with this council, but with previous councils for a location. I remember when, you know Dairy Queen down there, when, when somebody wanted to put in a beer license, it was, they finally got it through, but it was an act of Congress before they got it through because it was across from daycare. We do have rules and regulations, although it did pass the Board of Adjustments unanimously. I just got to give my point of view, and like I say, I, I know some people in the partnership group, I'm sure you're going to run it very, very well. I just, someplace in morality and life, we got to draw a line where we want our youth to go, so, you know, there was a reason we built a second softball field and put all the adults out there. We didn't allow alcohol at Cook Complex before the youth sports were over with, so. We're not Aberdeen, we're not Sioux Falls, we don't like to, just because they do it there doesn't mean it's right. We like to look at what we're, what we're looking for for Watertown, so that's just my take on it, and all due respect for everybody, whatever their vote is, so.
Councilman Peters?
Yeah, last comment I'd make, and this isn't probably the best example, is, you know, talking about the location, I think we would all agree that the, the pool is a, is a park, right? I think we would agree on that. Well, there's a park that's downtown with other places that have beer and wine licenses all over the place. Well, there's a park that's downtown with other places that have beer and wine licenses all over the place. And so if we're going to start talking about setbacks and distances from parks, and what we're going to allow for liquor license or a beer and wine license, that's a very slippery slope for how close is it before it's too close to the youth population? That's a hard thing to manage. So I would just throw that out there as we vote on it.
Thank you. I'll make a comment. I, in this case, I'm a pretty firm believer, well, in all cases, I'm a firm believer in the free market will largely decide what happens. And in this location, if you're advertising as a family-friendly location, that location isn't going to succeed as a bar. It's not built for that, it's not, you know, designed for that. It is designed as a family, as a family fun park. So I think if it becomes more of a, more associated with beer, families will not, will no longer go there, and you'll go out of business. And I know that that's not your desire, it's just to, you know, add on to something. So in this case, and also if it's insurance on the go-karts or whatever it is, if it becomes a problem, then the insurance will probably dictate that you take it out. So I'll let the free market largely decide the fate of a business, as well as give it to the business owner. Any further comments? All right. If you're in favor of issuing the license, so that is, if you are in favor of allowing this location to be able to sell malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, then you will say aye. If you are opposed to that, you will say no or nay. Finance Officer Bob Zee.
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Nay.
Tupper?
Nay.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're onto item 12A, Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment Appointments. I guess I will invite Community Development Manager Hanton up to possibly say a few things as far as how we switched it around, but I will lead it up and just say that I apologize to council that I didn't get you the name of the official list. I did run by, several years ago, I was on the committee that revised the rules of the City of Watertown to help demarcate the roles and responsibilities between the mayor and the city manager. And one of those was to, while the mayor still has the ability to appoint people, those names have to be ran through or given to the council for consideration 10 days prior. I was able to do that. I gave you a list of the potential names. I did not hear an objection to them. So just to announce the committee that I have designed or appointed, I am reappointing Liam Culhane to a term of three years. I am reappointing Blake Dolly for a term of one year. I'm reappointing Todd Kays for an appointment of two years. I'm reappointing Bonnie Oletzky for one year. I am reappointing Rhonda Dargatz-Johnson for two years. I am appointing Michelle Kokacek, who is a new appointee, for a term of three years. I am appointing Bill Spire, who used to be the alternate. He will now be a full board member for a period of two years. There will be two alternates that I am appointing, Julia Tate for one year and Justin L. B. for one year. The idea in this case is to bring in two new people, have them be alternates, have them start to learn the process. And then a year from now, when we have two of the longstanding members who will be going off, we have two members who will be ready to seamlessly slide in and take that responsibility on. And then at that point, we will likely be looking at appointing another alternate to just hopefully keep fostering this seamless citizen board. Anyway, those are the names. Manager Hanton, did you have anything to add?
I'll just add, so in November, November 1st, the new ordinance became effective, and that was to really coincide with this timeline of reappointments and to get us back on track with making sure that we are staying on top of members' terms and their expiration dates. And so all of those staggering terms that the mayor described, that is explained in ordinance. And then also, it, so all of these new appointments, if they are approved, then the current members' terms will go until the end of the year, and then these new terms will start January 1. And then that's where we'll have the board, the chairman appointments, and go forward with that. But then, as the mayor described, that makes sure that there is overlap, so you're not just reappointing an entire new board and needing onboarding and training and catching up to speed. So, thank you.
And thank you very much. And just to make it clear to council, I can allow some leeway, but we already discussed the ordinance change. This is just the names that we're really taking on tonight, but we wanted to branch out to reacquaint people with what we did and why. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any discussion on this, council? All right, thank you very much. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the appointments, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a resolution, the adoption of revisions of the engineering design standards. Engineer Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Please explain it to us.
So the city adopted the engineering design standards back in March of 2020, and the standards and criteria are amended as industrial standards and things evolve. The last time we updated the standards was in January 2022, so that would have been almost three years ago. So it's a handful of changes over the course of the last three years that we've noted and suggest, recommend approval. I want to note just a couple. The first one, well, they're both actually in Chapter 8, dealing with street widths and right-of-way widths. The local residential street width used to be 39 foot four, and we're recommending to reduce that to, I think it's 37, 37 feet. So reducing that two foot, it, there's some benefits to that, you know? Less asphalt, less cost to the developers, as well as future maintenance for the city. And of course, the ongoing snow removal, narrow roads are improvement. So that's one recommendation. And then also revised right-of-way width for collectors, minor collector roads. It, the original was 100-foot right-of-way, which is a pretty, pretty wide right-of-way, and we're recommending reduce it down to 66-foot, which is a more typical right-of-way. There is a kind of a caveat there, is that when it meets arterials, like when it would meet Highway 81 or 212, those are arterials, then an 80-foot right-of-way would be recommended for a distance of like 300 feet. So that gives some space for turning lanes and turning movements. The other changes are, I guess, relatively small, but I wanted to point out those two items. And if you have any other questions, I can stand by.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. So open it up for discussion. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So a quick question, City Engineer Peterson. So 39 feet down to 37 feet, correct, was, was, just to refresh, I believe we talked about this one other time, but I just want to refresh my memory on this. For parking on both sides of the street, or, you know, what is that two foot or whatever the difference is? What does that do for parking? Some parts of town, you can only park on one side because there's not enough room for two cars. I guess I've never measuring, going out in front of my street and measuring the width of the road. I don't know the difference. So if you could just highlight that for me?
There, that's about the narrowest that we can get to have parking on both sides of the road. In reality, with driveways and mailboxes and other things, it's very seldom do you have cars on both sides of the road at the same time. So they're staggered, which allows opportunity to, for, it's, the primary concern for us, at least, is proper fire trucks, and so that gives the opportunity for maneuverability on those roads, if that makes sense. So long answer, short answer is, you can get parking on both sides.
All right, and so for, this is like for the new construction. When we do a reconstruct, like, we just did a reconstruct on 7th, was it? 7th Avenue South, possibly, the one kind of behind Walgreens going to the west, right? So when we have these new design standards, that doesn't come into place on a reconstruct? Because there, I think we just lined it up with the road further up, the avenue further up, we just kind of made it the same width. Is this more new construction you're talking about, not in these older neighborhoods? It went narrower, an older neighborhood down the road where they have struggles, struggling parking on both sides on a reconstruct, just because now the standard, because some of those older neighborhoods, you do have a lot of curb and gutter where you can park a vehicle, at least in our older neighborhoods. But this doesn't affect that, this is new construction, or?
Correct. It's for new, new construction.
Anything else, Councilman? Councilman Beeler, you had something?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not sure I like the idea of going from 39-four to 37 feet. I don't agree with that. I think when you're in a community that gets a snow like we do, I think you need that extra width. And we've tried to do these things before, and in some of the PUDs, you know, they've tried to get us to allow narrower streets. I understand it's a little less expensive, but I think it's important to maintain that width.
Councilman Peters?
Along the same lines as Councilman Shuddy, what risk would there be? Some of this is a little bit rhetorical, but what risk would there be in the continuity side? You know, the 100-foot to 66-foot reducing of the right-of-way makes sense to me. 66 is typical for counties, townships, things like that. But what, what risk do we run if we're changing these, these standards? More so if, for the flow of the community, if that makes sense? As we, as we build out the community, is there anything that we should be aware of from a continuity standpoint? And while you noodle on that, the other thing I'd say is, have we got any input from private sector developers on what their thoughts are with some of this? Because they'll be just as impacted as the community would be.
Well, I think I'll start with the second question first. The developers, these ideas actually stemmed from developers during discussions for plan reviews. As far as the continuity, I'm trying to think of an example where, the way our developments are kind of laid out right now, I'm not, at the top of my head, I can't think of a, an issue that would be.
If I could, Mayor. Where my mind goes with this is sidewalks. And figuring out, and that might not be the best example that I can come up with, but, you know, we sit up here and we debate sidewalks in new developments versus redoing them in existing developments, and how does that, how does that flow? How does that connect? You know, we just had a discussion on, I think it was 12th Avenue this summer about, you know, you're obviously familiar with that, Justin, and in some of the pushback we had from the community members of, you know, the new design standards came out where sidewalks, you know, have to be in. And how does that flow appropriately in the community? You know, I'm just trying not to kneecap ourselves if we do accept them. And, you know, personally, it's going to come as a surprise, but I didn't read all 340 pages of these design standards, so I'm a little blind here. But point here is, I'm just trying to see where the boogeyman is before he jumps out.
I'm...
Most of that was rhetorical, by the way.
Okay.
Can you locate the boogeyman for Councilman Peters?
I'm looking for it.
Councilman Tupper?
I would have a question for Chief Rowland, and you're fine, just sitting there, you don't have to come up. Are you fine with these, these numbers, the width of the streets? Okay. And one other thing I'll bring up is, is I like to see us kind of looking forward with working with the developers a little bit, and I like that idea. Myself and the mayor just sat through an afternoon housing summit not too long ago, and I don't know how many times we were told that Watertown is so hard to work with, you know? So it's nice to see when we're looking out for the developers' costs a little bit too, so, thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you. Was any, now, this has been a while since discussion took place on this, but was there any consideration? Because right now, we have, for Clearview Triangle, we just have a standard of 15 feet, I believe, don't we? I believe that's what it is?
It's 25 feet.
25?
Yeah.
Well, I know there's, was some discussion of that being a varying number based on speed limit? Because Clearview is all about safety. Well, 25 feet on a vehicle moving 25 miles per hour is a lot different than 25 feet with a vehicle moving 35 or 40 or 45. And there was some talk some time ago about potentially, at least having the discussion, about having the Clearview Triangle established based on the road speed, that, two roads that intersect, to give more visible space time based on the faster vehicles. Was that talked about at all, Justin?
Not in this round of standard updates, but I'll make note.
So just so I may, you know, this is something where we kind of have a larger, and I'm disappointed you didn't read all 340 pages, I did. No, I didn't. But at any point, if we, if we decide we want to look at something and change it, we can do that, right? We don't need to do a false whoop, look at another 340 pages. It could be an item-by-item basis, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. So anyway, that's something that I still think is important. As far as the Clearview Triangle, at least consideration, and what may be should, maybe it should get looked at. So, all right, thank you.
Any further comments? Community Development Manager Hanton, you had something you want to include? And while you're walking up, I'd just like to say something that Councilman Tupper and I were at the Housing Summit, which was, I think, just two weeks ago, put on by the Watertown Development Company. A large group of people were there to provide information on a lot of work that has been going on. And while there, I mentioned something that I try to do quite often in public, which is if you are a developer, if you're anyone out there in the community that has suggestions or ideas, specific ideas are extremely helpful. Comments like Watertown isn't easy to work with, that's not helpful, okay? Because you're not actually saying why. Because, and that's where I always challenge someone, explain to me why. Because if you explain to me, if you can say something, then we can correct it. Because I think that everyone is in, you know, would like to do what we can for the sake of Watertown. I know that. But we can't do it if we're blind and deaf. So anyway, if you have specific ideas, something like this, you know, this process right here is the time to do so. So Manager Hanton?
Thank you, Mayor. And that actually is kind of what I wanted to speak to, too, just from the community development side of things, and hearing these concerns from the development community. And like it was discussed at the Housing Summit that Councilman Tupper and Mayor Holene also attended, that was a large concern, and it is kind of a collective effort of little, like these little modifications that can be done, that can help development. And so actually, I came back from, to the office from that, and then talked with Justin and suggested that. Well, they, he had already looked into it, and that was already a part of this revision. So I think that's great, and I think that there are additional modifications that can be made or just looked into in the effort to still have complete streets that are, you know, sufficient to what engineering design standards call for. And because obviously, too, we had increased what the base course was and all of that for the, to try to solve the need... for the, to try to solve the need for having to repair a street that had been installed fifteen years prior, where it should have lasted longer because the base wasn't there. So it's kind of give and take that way of just all these different factors to look at. The other thing, too, is like a normal driving lane is eleven feet and a parking lane would be, or like a parking width would be eight feet. So this is still giving it, that equals thirty-eight, and we're at thirty-seven-four. So what else is, what else is nice is obviously a car is not eleven feet in width. It just makes it more comfortable. But the other good thing about really having narrower streets is just that fact of repair, less pavement all around, concrete or asphalt. And then also, when you have a more narrow restricted driving lane, you know, it does kind of, it makes for traffic calming measures. So that's good, too. So just wanted to add a couple of those things. And I, I like the reduction.
Councilman Jones?
So Brandy, for future, what are you hearing from the developers that we need to be doing different? You could talk to them every day, we don't.
Well, and that's kind of a loaded question. Obviously, it's always if it can be more affordable. And what else, how that ties into it are even just the lot prices. Because I priced it out for what infrastructure is, for what our standards are. And this is also something that will be coming in front of you for some ordinance amendments to some of our zoning districts for minimum lot widths. Because really, when you have, and I ran up and grabbed my notebook because I had this all written on here after the, the Housing Summit, which that, that was a great collaboration effort where it really gets you, it sparks ideas and, and kind of synergy. So that has been great and it will be continuous, would be the plan. So if you have for a concrete, which typically a residential street, let's go for the, an eight-inch thirty-six for four hundred. Okay, so it's about, the infrastructure alone is around like fifty-five thousand for, or fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand for concrete and forty-one thousand for asphalt. So when you look at that alone, you know, like there's not much of, for affordable, and that's for an R1 district, seventy-five feet in width, the lot. There's not a lot of room there for somebody to want to get into that business. And then also, you know, prices vary as well and they are continuously going up. So just when you look at that for what, just the lot itself, for what the infrastructure costs are, not the overhead of, you know, purchasing the land and developing it and contractors, all of that, that's just infrastructure. So.
Councilman Jones, anything? Councilman Tupper?
I just got thinking while I was sitting here, maybe it's in this, just an idea I'm here. After sitting through that housing study, it was a great, great, great afternoon. A lot of great things came out of that. And maybe what we should do is, is just try to have a two, three-hour afternoon with developers to try to, as, as you stated, we can't fix problems unless we hear about them. So maybe we should have a developer summit with a number of us sitting on it and, and yourself and engineering. And, and I would like to say play some fire involved in that also. So we're touching all the bases. So I don't know what your thoughts of that are. Now, at this time of the year, it'd be, especially after we get past the first of the year, would be a good time of the year, wouldn't it? Not all really busy, so.
Councilman Peters? Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the work that ever, whoever has been doing, working on this and putting this together. There is, you know, my own thoughts just on, I think of opening a car door and, and just the width of, I'm sure we've all had a close call on a, on a, you know, neighborhood where you open your car door and there's a close call of the car going by. Or if a police officer's got someone pulled over, there's, you know, I'm sure an extra couple of feet can make a difference for a police officer in neighborhoods. So I, I look, I'm looking at it, my mind's thinking that direction. And I'm thinking about what started, what was the reason for lowering it down by two feet? It sounds like it's cost, right? That's the reason, just to make, make it lesser cost for the, for the developer, is what it sounds like. So, which doesn't mean that's not a wrong reason. So that's what I'm just trying to work in through, is, is that enough reason personally? Then I also got to look at, you know, if I'm trusting the, those on staff that are, that have been doing the research and working through it, that's, I got to put some emphasis on that, not just what I'm thinking up in my head. So, so that's why I'm, on this particular width, I'm still just kind of processing a little bit here on, you know, not to minimize the developer side. I, I guess this would be a good one, I could ask if there's any developers on the council. How does it work when we, when we, when we do development and you say this affects the cost, you know? Does that, does the cost of infrastructure go into the price of the lot? Does that make the lot more money? Or how does a, is it like, like any business where you, if you get, if you have a, whatever, an increase in taxes, you just pass that on to your, you know, to your customer? Is that how it works in development with infrastructure? Does it just the price of the lot goes up? That's a question I had before I finish here.
Well, I'd be happy to answer your question. Yeah, essentially, essentially, the, the, the way to look at it would be, you know, what we tell people in, in my line of work is that, you know, I think the misnomer out there is that cities build roads and really developers build roads. And it's looked at as they need to make a return on that. So the cost of that would factor into what they need to sell a property for to make it worth it. So I think the short answer to that is yes, it does matter.
So it'll affect the cost of the, the sale of the, the lot itself, if you will? That's where the, it's going to be the homeowner paying for that lot. So it isn't necessarily saving the developer any money. It's the homeowner buying that particular lot, you know, will be paying maybe a little bit less if there's a little less infrastructure, so it's-
Yeah, and if I could, and Brandy, please chime in on this, but you know, think about the, the infrastructure package that was passed in legislature a few years ago. What, what stumped developers was the cost of infrastructure to put it in and not pass those costs along to the home buyer. So when that bill was passed, it was, the, the idea was that the lots would be more affordable. The savings would be not necessarily to the developer, but then passed on to the home buyer. So, infrastructure cost.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for that. And all the work, again, everyone that's putting the work into this. If, if the safety side of it is saying it's okay and, and then I'm going to, yeah, trust the judgment of our, of our staff, so.
Councilman Tupper?
Community Development Director Hanton, how, how many hours did you put, three hundred and forty-eight pages? How many hours did that take you? Probably longer than it took Mike to read them?
Actually, that is engineering's doing. So they deserve the credit.
And I know Lori's probably pretty happy because it kept Mike busy for a while, so.
Councilman Jones?
So Kyle alluded it, alluded to it also, but the developer is fronting the costs on all this. And the time they have their money on the line and the opportunity costs, they're trying to decide, are they going to go to Watertown or are they going to go somewhere else? Are they going to ever recoup? Many of them have gone broke. All the problems, all the issues, the weather, all of those things come in. And then maybe you can sell that lot for what you hope is the market value. So there's a lot that goes into that, which is why not too many people do it. That's all.
Councilman Danforth?
Over the years, that been involved in planning mission, board of adjustments, and on the council, we always hear that Watertown's hard to, to work with from a development standpoint. But one of the things that I hear the most really isn't about the infrastructure costs and such. There are some things that happen. I know that utilities made a, a change in some of their policies a few years ago that, that it's felt that was quite adverse to, to new, to developers and homeowners. The one thing I hear the most of, and certainly Brandy, different than where you guys are at, and Justin as well, is people go out, they want to sit down, they want to know exactly what they got to bring to the table. They feel they do that and they come back with it, and then they're told they need this. And then they go back and they do their thing and they come back and now they need this. That's what I hear as far as frustration out of developers is that, it, it certainly costs are a big issue, but it's that lay it on the line, put it out there exactly what I got to be able to do, I'll go do it, but don't keep adding to that every time I come back. There is a frustration with that. Hopefully that gets better. I don't, I'm not really sure the cause of that. But you know, hopefully that is getting better. Because you'll, we, we have our season, right? And the more times they got to come back, that equates to dollars and lost time. So it, it, we can do this, other stuff, but procedurally, we got to make sure that we're working on the service side of it as well in order to be better engaged and, and more of a resource for our, our developers, so.
Mayor, could I, could I respond to that at all?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Danforth. And that is something, you know, like we hear it too, even with this recent Housing Summit, you know, that, that side of, of staff. We, you know, we hold design review team meetings where everybody chimes in. But one thing, too, as far as the development community goes, that is why we have engineering design standards, that it lays it all out there of what is expected. So, you know, as far as, and we do, we compile all of our comments that against ordinance of what's, and engineering design standards of what is required. And then we compile that in one package, send it back. We'll get plans that, that have not addressed what is in ordinance or engineering design standards that have been approved by council. So that's just staff doing our job. And potentially, you know, if a developer or an engineer disagrees with Western ordinance, staff can't do anything about that. That's something that they need to turn to their council people about. You know, we can, we can bring it, we can bring amendments to you guys, but there's only so much, you know, we have to hold people accountable, too. But it is, we want it to be streamlined and we want people to have a, a good development experience in Watertown.
Councilman Tupper?
Ms. Hanton, isn't most that addressed in the development agreement?
That comes after. So they go, they do the concept plan, the preliminary plan for the phase that they're doing, and then they do the plat and construction plans. And then the, the development agreement and the plat is what comes forward to council for approval. And the development agreement lays out everything that they have submitted and what have been approved in their construction plans to move forward with their infrastructure installation. And another thing that's beneficial in Watertown for development is that we don't have upfront bonds for what a project cost will be if a developer leaves, doesn't finish their work. We have platted lots. After you plat a lot, you can sell it. And you, and if some, it's, so there's a lot of trust factor there. And it's, it's literally, they have two years to install it in the infrastructure. So, and that way, too, we are being pro-development in not having more overhead and upfront costs of somebody having to submit a bond for the entire project cost or a percentage of it. And then we also don't have anything on the back end, too. So it's really, it's a lot of accountability and, and trust, you know, that, that these development agreements, that is, it's, and it's an agreement, you know, it's a recorded agreement. And there are, there, there are methods for getting something done that is outstanding as well, written into it. So we do have the authority that way, but that's just another pro, that, I mean, we are being pro-development on that front. Because other communities, they do have those financial guarantees.
I don't believe, you know, I, I've talked to contractors from other communities. I don't believe Watertown's any harder to work with than anybody else. Matter of fact, some of them said just the opposite. But it's all great, great conversations in the end. I think it's a great place to start with. Thank you.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. In regards, just to go back to the street widths, you know, we've, we've talked about this for years. I mean, it's been going on for years, skinnier lots, skinnier streets. We've been pushing on this for a long time. I understand the development side of it. You know, if, if you can skinny up your lots, you can get in a block, you can get two, three more, you know, properties in there perhaps. And I'm all for free enterprise, making money. But I get a little concerned in this area with the snowfall that we get. You know, you can see where they grade streets, it's not uncommon to have three feet of the street covered up with deep snow from the graders on both sides of the street. You know, that's where I have a concern. It's a safety issue as far as I'm concerned. But I think, you know, where do we, where does this stop? We're going to be at fifty-foot lots and thirty-foot streets 10 years from now? You know, I just don't see it. I, I, we keep trying to do this. I think that's one area that I don't think we should compromise from a safety standpoint. That's my opinion. And I, God bless the, the developers, and I know it's going to cost a little bit more money, it's going to cost a little bit more, but how is that, where does, how does that stack up to somebody that gets injured in an automobile accident? Or, you know, maybe several? So that's, that's where I'm concerned.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Beeler, I wanted to be respectful to your comments regarding the width of the road. Did you want to propose an amendment to strike that out or anything?
If I could, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not going to vote with, vote for this as is. You know, I can go along with some of the other ones. I mean, we're trying to, as we do all the time, try to skinny everything up. But in this case, I would like to see us maintain that street width. To me, after all the years of planning I've been involved with, I think that's important. You know, just, I don't want us to become Potter'sville. You know what I'm saying?
Nice Christmas movie reference there. Councilman Danforth?
Two things. Brandy, I want to make sure that you understand my statement. I wasn't indicating that, that the, that the ongoing request for information falls all on your guys' plate. I know that, that's a two-sided deal and I've been in some of those discussions. So I know you guys do a good job with that and, and work very hard at it. So, but I do have a question. When we get into some of the older parts of town, like, you know, let's say North Maple or North Broadway, whatever, you get into those residential areas, how wide are those, physically, how wide are those streets?
I think some of the narrowest streets we have are about thirty-one feet. I think in that area, it's thirty-one, thirty-two feet.
Older part of town, because that is-
It's pretty narrow.
If you were going to say that's thirty-seven-four, I'd say, ooh, no, we don't. Because that's really, really tight. So are we in that thirty-one-foot range, kind of? Got your little ruler?
And we could pull it, do you have GIS pulled up, Justin? Okay. Otherwise, I know that we, I also could look back at my files. We don't have it pulled up here, but I can go on my laptop. We did kind of a survey of some of these streets, like Broadway and literally just to, to, and when we were doing the engineering design standards the first time, we went kind of through this, just different scenarios, streets that exist, we know how they feel when you're driving on them. So I think Broadway would be a good, because Broadway's also a collector's street and it has a lot of traffic each day. So everyone can probably relate to that. So I will try to find that. Let me pop back, though, on my laptop, if that works.
So I'm going to throw out a question to all of us here, and really it's more from your guys' perspective. If we approve this tonight, let's just say we approve it as presented, does this, before this goes into force, it's got to wait the twenty days, is that correct? Because it's an ordinance language changer. Is this not ordinance, this is design standards?
It would still need it because it's a resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
So it'd still be twenty days?
I'm sorry?
Twenty days from publishing it.
Okay, well, the reason why I ask that is if we said, yep, go to thirty-seven-four, and somebody comes in tomorrow and says, here's my plan, thirty-seven-four, and a month from now we say, eh, we really don't like thirty-seven-four, now we've got already somebody that has got permission to do thirty-seven-four, correct? So are we better off at this point saying, as, as Councilman Beeler is stating, are we better off today saying, you know, keep it at the thirty-nine-four, come back to us with a little more homework or whatever it's going to take to convince- homework, or whatever it's gonna take to convince the all of us that 37.4 is sufficient? Or do we approve it today, and you gotta come back and do that because we've got, let's just say, we aren't convinced? So what's the better route for us to take on this? I'm a better safe than sorry kinda guy, I really am, and, you know, I'll use, oh, I can't think of the name of the street. Grandview, I'm gonna use Grandview as an example. How wide is Grandview? That's just a little segment of road there. The reason why I ask that is, a couple of years ago, during the winter, I know that there was six to eight feet of that road that were, that weren't usable due to snow piled on the side. That makes a pretty narrow road if you're at 37 feet, because it was, be well less than 30 feet of actual usable road. So, I'm trying to in my mind relate to what I see, you know, if we could do it safely and from everybody's aspect, and I know Rob from Streets isn't here, but if we could do that and we know that it works, I'm all for that. I don't wanna add any more cost for our developer or for us, because eventually it is a cost to us than we have to, but I don't wanna interject any problems either that we're doing just for the sake of trying to save a few bucks.
If I could comment just on those remarks, so, you know, in a snow event, and that when there is cleanup happening, you know, sometimes there are, there are just those events as well, where sometimes you don't wanna design for the worst-case scenario either for long-term, because not only does it save the cost for the installation of the original street, but it also for ongoing perpetual maintenance. And then, you know, so if it is a one-lane only at some times because of a snow event where the snow crew is out cleaning up, you know, people are also not supposed to be parked on the streets during snow events or after a snow event, how many inches? But there are factors there where I think that, and I'll get this pulled up so we have some more perspective for all-around widths. I wish that, and I apologize that I wasn't prepared to, because I really do have all that information compiled of different streets. Another one, so Willow Creek Village 5th, where Willow Creek Court is, that was done, that had a lesser street standard. Justin, do you recall, was that one 36 or 3...
Testing my memory, it's either 36 or 38.
Okay.
That might've been 36, I think.
And then that is one side, that is one-side parking, which obviously we don't want to be the case in residential districts, there needs to be on-street parking.
Councilman Peters wants to add specific conversation.
I do, yeah, because my comments are kind of along the same as Mike's in the sense of, is the shot clock ticking for this and when we need to approve it? Or what does the timeline look like? Because, you know, I don't wanna act in haste and approve something and then have to come back and change it to Councilman Danforth's point, but do we have some time to say, you know, table it, since this is the first real discussion we've had, and then come back to it in the next council meeting? Or what does the appropriate timeline look like to have to approve this?
Engineer Peterson?
The, I guess I'd say that there is an option to table it, there isn't a rush, it doesn't have to be done tonight. I would, we can have some more conversation, but I would encourage these changes be done before, like February, March, before construction season starts, so we do have a little bit of time.
For reference here too, I have it pulled up where Grandview Drive is 37 feet 2 inches for this driving surface, and when you, it's 37.4, that is the driving surface, and then you still have the two-foot, like 2.67, that's total street.
37.4 is the total width back-to-back.
Okay, so then let's do that.
Correct, yep.
So can I follow up on that?
Councilman?
Well, that's helpful, I didn't know if we needed to approve this by a certain date, and I guess I don't have any major concerns, rather than we could, you know, do some recon as council members and talk to, you know, some people that are in the development realm in Watertown, and then outside of the development realm, just to maybe get a better understanding of what's appropriate. But the question that I had was more so along the lines of, I don't wanna hold up the show, but if we have a little, you know, a couple of weeks to do some recon, I think it might ultimately help further the discussion.
So it looks like that's 40. And yeah, I think too, that we can compile the, all the data that we have, and then we could even do cost estimates of what the cost savings is as far as the development side of things, but then also give you more streets that exist for a better perspective and what that would look like exactly.
Counsel, if you're okay with this, I can use the chair's prerogative and just defer action on this, at least till the meeting on December 16th. Would that be okay? Okay. I'll actually ask for a motion to defer action until the December 16th. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. In the conversation on this, Councilman Jerns, what we're gonna do is just, the motion is made to defer this until the next official city council meeting, and we can discuss it again then.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, the only thing I would add that would really, really help me, Brandy, is what you're doing right now, that's giving me visual examples, saying, here's where we're at, here's what we are here, here's what it is here, because then I can, like, that's how my brain works, if I can see something and relate to it, it does work. So, at times. So, that would help, to have some examples.
Yeah.
For you to visualize.
And like I said, I have the information already too, so I, that's where Justin and I should've been on the same, or City Engineer Peterson should've been on the same page. Broadway is 31 feet, back curb, back to curb. So you get people parking on both sides, Broadway is both sides, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and you still get two-way traffic, and so this, what we'd be proposing would be about six and a half feet more than that. So narrower streets, traffic, our traffic calming boulevards and right-of-way is where we want for snow storage. So hopefully the snow on the streets is temporary, and that people are not parking on the street in a snow event, so that everything can get cleaned up expediently.
Councilman Tupper, and Councilman, I will encourage you to, if you have something that you know you want brought back, now is a good time to mention it.
Just, this would be a great conversation for a work session on the 9th, with a lot more of that information.
If that's enough time to get it, if not, then the 16th can work too.
Thank you.
We already have it, so.
Okay.
Like I said, I wish I just could remember where it's filed.
Counsel, any further comments, questions? All right. The motion will be to defer action until, I will just say, defer action to a later council meeting. So, any questions on the motion? All those in favor of deferring action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we are on to the 12C, an approval of resolution authorizing signatures of warrants and attestation for the city of Watertown. I think attestation is... Go to our city attorney, Karikol?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the appointment of the interim city manager as the finance, our current city finance officer, Bob Zine, we did have to do some housekeeping for council to authorize additional party to deal with requirements of counter-signature and attestation and countersigning of warrants, AKA checks, not to be confused with court warrants for your arrest, they do not have that power. So under South Dakota codified law 9-14-17, the city finance officer is given the duty of countersigning all checks in the treasury, along with the city manager, our Home Rule Charter, and South Dakota law 91015, again restates that the city manager and the finance officer countersign checks. In addition, the city finance officer has also been carrying out the duty of attestation of any contracts or documents, and we need to reassign that as she cannot, or I should say, for the integrity of the city, we should not have her doing both functions. So in consultation with the interim city manager, we, given that the assistant city manager does have those abilities under their job description and under the charter, we felt it was appropriate to designate that person as the secondary signature. So we have a resolution here for you to pass, which would give the interim city manager and the assistant city manager both signing all warrants for the payment of money. The attestation can also be done by the city clerk and the person in our city departments that is most akin to the city clerk's duties, is our records and licensing manager, currently Jennifer Collins, and so we are requesting that she perform the attestation functions when the city, that were normally for a city clerk. And then any contracts requiring counter-signature other than attestation would be the interim city manager and the assistant city manager. And some examples of those, some are actual contracts that you guys have already passed, some are actually deeds for the cemetery, so that's just another example. I know the park and rec department had contacted us who's gonna do the dual signatures, so here you go. And so with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. I will take a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for questions or comments, Counsel. All right. Hearing none, I wanna say thank you for catching that, and I will ask just for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now on to the two items that I added last onto the agenda. The first one will be the creation of the succession planning committee, and I want to start off by apologizing to the council. I overstepped, or I was too fast on appointing this, and Councilman Danforth caught something in the Home Rule Charter that I have to run this by council, so I still feel very strongly about this committee and how I hope it functions, but we need to make it official. So the motion will be to create the succession planning committee, and I know I talked about it ever so slightly a week ago, but the idea behind it is, we have people in the community that have a lot of expertise and experience vetting recruitment firms and finding people for incredibly important positions that oversee multimillion-dollar organizations, and that is exactly what the city of Watertown is. The idea is not to usurp or take out council, council is still going to be very involved in this process, and I want to make it clear that council still has the final say in everything. This is an advisory committee. The idea is that they have a lot of advice that they can give through their experience, and I want them to give it, and I want them to know that the community, I want everyone to know that the community is encouraged to take part, because in the end, it's not just city councils, city manager that we are hiring, it is the entire community of Watertown's city manager that we're hiring, and that's part of the reason why I wanna do that. So I would like to have council active in this, I would like them to offer their perspective, their advice, I would like them to be there to answer questions from the committee, but I do want the committee to move forward at a brisk pace, and the idea is to get something back to us as early as the December 16th meeting, so we can start moving forward on this. The first step will be to just go through the job description and some of the qualifications that we are looking for, that we would list on a website, and then we can get that posted to different websites, the city website, the state websites, there's a few national websites, to start the process of letting people know that we are trying to find the best candidate possible, and then the committee will also be looking at some of the recruitment firms. Again, not to say that the one that we hired in the past isn't going to make it or anything like that, I just want them to be able to offer some perspective, again, and council will be there to help along the way. It will be led by the committee, and I think Rob Peterson is going to take over the chairmanship of that, so he can call the meetings, but I want council to know that they are very, they are invited to be very much a part of this and offer insight, but the idea is that they can gather the information and come back to us so that we can make the best possible decision that we can. And in the end, I wanna reassert that it is council's decision all along the way for any official actions. So, that was the idea behind it, and I thank you for considering that, and I, in order to discuss it, I need a motion to create the committee. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on this? Councilman Peters? Oh, Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, before I interject here, could you go through the appointment names again? I know that was done once a while ago.
So the names that I appointed were city leaders that I talked to who had experience. Rob Peterson, Joy Nelson, Liam Culhane, Chris Carter, Scott Munger, and as a consultant, Amber Dahl. And Amber is, actually I think she is the head of the South Dakota HR executives right now, and she was not ready to commit full-time to the actual, all of the meetings, but she has a lot of HR experience that she can give us in looking over the documents that we would take out for advertising the position. She felt like she could offer her expertise in that, and so those are the names as of now. Councilman Danforth?
Well, and Mayor, you and I've had some discussions on this, and number one, I appreciate you, not to steal somebody else's phrase, but to circle back and get to procedurally where we know we need to be, it's very important. My biggest thing really at this point is the ownership of the responsibility. We as elected officials are the ones that have been tasked with all aspects of management of the city manager. The only thing that I would add to your proposal here, I know every one of these individuals with the exception of Amber, I have, I hold all of those people in high regard. I would personally like to see a couple of council members to be ongoingly a part of that. I think it's important that we actually, instead of on the sidelines, maybe being asked, or maybe being a part of it in some manner, I think we need to be a part of it. When it's all said and done, accountability is right here. And so that's the only thing, and again, I will support whatever this council approves, but I do believe in the best interest of, from all aspects, in my opinion, I think we should have a couple of council members be a part of that.
And thank you, and I forgot to, I neglected to say something, but I did take that into consideration, and I don't want to say nothing, but I know that council has a lot on its plate right now. Not only is it a time of year where there's a lot going on in our personal lives, but we have a lot of things going on as a council that we need to also be focused on. So the idea is not to take our attention off of this, which is extremely important, but is to also speed it along, and I just don't want, I don't want this, I don't want this committee to move at the pace of some of the council meetings, not to say that as a wrong thing, it's just, there's, you know, we, if I make it overly official with council, then we have to start posting it ahead of times, we have to start, you know, abiding by all sorts of laws and communication things. So my idea was to appoint a council liaison that the committee would work through, but also, again, I wanna make it clear, if you are a councilman and you want to attend any of these meetings, you are invited to do so, to listen to what the deliberations are, and if they ask questions, you are there to offer advice. So I would like to appoint Councilman Peters as the official liaison to this committee, and then that would be part of the motion as well. But Councilman Peters, you did have something to say even before I said your name.
Yep. Well, you know, I guess to maybe comment a little bit on Councilman Danforth's comments, I rest- I wrestled around with this a little bit to try to figure out the best path forward, because I think expediting the process, but doing it responsibly is the goal. And I'm thinking through the monotonous process that is trying to establish quorums so we can all be there and have a say, and I see that taking more time than I think we ultimately want it to. And I think that the key here is that, in visiting with the mayor about this, we're asking people that are influential and connected in the community, with the help of Amber Dahl, who is an HR expert, for lack of a better term, to help set the table for us. We are ultimately going to have the final say. And to me, I think that in terms of transparency, community involvement, you know, all the buzzwords that get thrown out there, I can't think of a better situation to have a group of leaders like this really grab this endeavor, and I kind of liken it to the Watertown 2050 endeavor that just went on, where that was led by a group of private citizens that, you know, they're not, they're wired like the private sector, and the private sector moves quickly. And I think that's what we're after here. So I'm in support of this, and I think this group will help us find that next star and continue the good work of Watertown. So I'm two thumbs up on, I'm excited for it, and thank you, Mayor, for getting it teed up.
Thank you. Councilman Jerrons?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm also supporting you and have all along, speaking with members of our community. The names that you've chosen for this committee are strong leaders, they move efficiently, and adding more numbers just adds to more schedules that have to coincide, it just slows it down, and I'll be here supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Tupper?
Being, we're going to add a liaison, do we need amended a motion?
I would...
Is it attorney?
I would, yeah. He's not a member of the committee, so it's not technically, yeah. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Councilman Danforth. Yep, Councilman Danforth?
You know, I understand all the discussion that's taken place. The importance of moving forward is, should be higher on our list. What's higher on our list is doing it right with the end result, with whatever that is. That's what's most important to me. And there's an old Chinese saying that says, you know, you hurry up and go slow. So the one question I have is, are these going to be noticed committee meetings? Will a public be invited if they so want to come to these meetings? How will anybody know about them? What type of meeting structure are we actually looking at here?
I would, thank you, Councilman. I would suggest to the committee that they notice council, so that council knows when it's taking place. Maybe give notice if it's going to be a public meeting where they want public input. I think that would, in fact, I want them to have that opportunity, because as smart as these people are that I would like to appoint, I know that there are other smart people out there as well, and if they have something that they want to put in to make the process better, I would be open to that. So that's how I envision it happening, and, yeah. And I totally understand, Councilman Danforth, I had the same thought, because we're in a position where we want to expedite this, and we want to make this happen as fast as possible, but we also want to make sure that we take the time to do it right. So it's going to be that tension between those two, but this is just one thing that I thought might help us get some input, especially on the job description and the posting of the position and moving that. Councilman Peters?
Yeah, I think you said something right there that maybe would help all of us, and that's job description, maybe for the committee as well. In terms of timeline, you know, how far are we asking them to take their work, and then when does the council take over the final process? I think that the committee would probably want, maybe you've had those conversations, but the clarity, I think, would be, would be good for both sides.
And I would agree with you. I think that the committee needs to be done with their, at least this phase, at least by Christmas, if not earlier. I would ideally like to see if we can't just get something on the agenda for December 16th, at least if they're not done with everything, at least certain steps that we can start at moving forward. Councilman Beeler?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just can you kind of clarify a little bit about what you're asking them to do? You know, what's the final objective with this group? And I think, not so much for me, you and I had a conversation about this, you know, for the audience, just maybe kind of spell out, Otto, if you would.
Yeah. The real goal of it is just to get the best, eventually, the final goal is to get the best person in the position. And if that can be done, so the committee, I know that I have clarified to them, I want them to look over the documents for the job description, and that will involve some council input, because if we need to change the job description somewhat, I also want to make sure that we are posting it in the correct way. I want them to basically look over some recruitment firms, offer us some suggestions so that we can move forward with a recruitment firm, which will be our decision, as will the job description, will be a council decision at the end. But those are the things that I know that I want them to move forward on immediately, and that, those will be the steps that I want them to take right now. Councilman Danforth?
One of the things that I, and I've talked with a few, you and Mayor, you and I have talked here, but we know, as council members, and certainly some of the staff do as well, we know a lot more about this position as it relates to the requirements, what we think or believe works maybe better than what we would have on the onset of this. Same thing with the Home Rule Charter. There's some things within the Home Rule Charter, I think, Mayor, and I think you're going to be talking about that. That's really important, what you're going to be talking about in regards to a kind of a midterm evaluation. But unless you're in those shoes and understand what we feel as individuals, and in most cases, I think we're in agreement as a council of what works and what doesn't work, unless you're in there, how do you know what that, how to change that job description? That's a concern of mine. That's why I think it's really important to have, this council has to be able to have a say in that. And I understand at the end, we can, we'll have a say ultimately, but, you know, let's, I'd rather build it appropriately as you go along and then submit something that maybe is more reflective of what we all understand it should be, than to wait till the end and go, oh, that's not really appropriate, or that, maybe you might want to consider this, this, this. It's a different perspective because of where we've been for the last three and a half years. And we've learned a lot, and that's not to say good, bad, or other, but there are some things that without question, I think, if we could go back in time, we'd change. I really do. So that's my concern, is how does that happen? And then, kind of drawing off, maybe Councilman Beulah's, is what's the end result of this committee, then, is to bring back a job description and a recommendation for a recruiting firm? And is that, that done? Where does this go from that point on, then? Maybe can answer that, that's...
Councilman Peters, you can...
Yeah, I think that's a question I had too, Mike, was that where does, the job description, because as the potentially newly appointed liaison, I'd like some clarity as well in terms of, we understand December 16th is when we hope to have something back from them, but what do we hope to have back? And then if that's, I'm looking for a job description or job duties from the committee, and again, this is the first time we've had this discussion as a group, so there's a lot of unanswered questions here. But what I do know is that I do like the fact that we're asking private citizens to step up to help us with the next selection. I think that's really what we're discussing right now, is are we open to the, some leaders in the community to help us set the table for finding an appropriate job description, helping us get the recruiting firms on board, and then really delivering this to the council to expedite the process of finding the next city manager? To me, that is what we're discussing. And within that, you know, we need to figure out job duties and what is the ask of the committee, but really, I don't want to overcomplicate this, because ultimately, and I agree with this, we have the final say, and we're the ones that are going to be held responsible. So we want to make sure that we're not rushing it or doing something that's not appropriate for this process. But again, I want community input, because we've received a lot of community input throughout this process. And for me, being on council for the last year and a half, I've received a lot of feedback of the Home Rule Charter and the city manager form of government, and the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I'm looking at this as a way to bottle that up, take the feedback from the community, and help, to your point earlier, Mike, what did we learn this last three and a half years? Certainly, as a council, we can speak to that, but what did the community learn as well? We don't know that unless we get people to help form this with us. That's where my mind's at.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'll just say, I'm going to use myself as an example here, because I do understand where Councilman Danforth is coming from. We do know a lot, because we have been living it for three and a half years, but just using myself as an example, that is one reason why I want outside people looking at this. It's, I'm too close to it. It's too fresh, coming on to the recent resignation. This wasn't something I was prepared for, I didn't know that it was coming. So I'll just say from my perspective, I'm no HR expert, I have not, other than hiring the city manager previously, I have limited experience hiring people for positions like this. And I'm extremely close to this process, what has been going on, and I'm not certain, I want to express to the committee what I think should be done, but I want some people with level heads to, like, say maybe, you know, like, maybe, Mayor, you're too close, you're too, you know, it's, you're too close, you're too, it's too fresh off of it. And the other thing that I'd like to say is, at least for me, and I think for the council, I'm too committed right now. There's a lot more responsibilities that have fallen on my plate, along with the, a lot of the other things that have, that I already knew were going to happen. I want to have some other people look at it to make sure it's done right, because I know that I wouldn't be able to rush it, in which case, I don't know when I would be able to get to it. And I don't want to wait for that, and I know that we have some people who have wonderful experience and expertise on it, who can help it along, and that's, that's how I, and I'm just using myself as an example in that process. Councilman Jerrons?
Thanks, Mayor. I would just add, with Councilman Danforth talked about the number of people that we all know on here. I believe the communication levels of what we've seen can be communicated to them, they're going to have an open phone line, they can communicate to us, and I have, I have no concerns right now about where we're going to go with this type of a group that has incredible experience in Watertown and is sitting on the outside looking in and has seen a lot of things themselves. So I'm not sure, I'd like to offer that amendment that we're needing on this motion to add the liaison, so we can move forward with this motion.
We can do that. Councilman Peters?
One more thing I'd maybe suggest here, too, is as we talk about, you know, staff and council involvement, Director Nichols would of course be available to help with any questions and guide us along this process as well. We don't want to exclude certainly her from being the lead of HR for the community either. Again, I think that as we form this, more of that will come into play.
Yeah. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to anticipate, look forward. All right, so this committee comes back with a proposed job description, with a recommended recruiting firm and methodology, and once that kicks in, then the recruiter goes to work and brings us potential candidates for review. Who does that, who does that vetting at that initial stage? Now, certainly, the recruiter is your first level of vetting that takes place based on job descriptions, et cetera. So assuming that naturally takes place, where does this committee fit into that process to now that, here come the, here's the two, three, five candidates that should be considered? Who, what happens at that point? Who handles that? Who's responsible for it? How does that work?
In that case, I would, I would want council to basically work with the recruitment firm. So the recruitment firm would win what down, and then they would bring their, what they think are the top prospects to the council for consideration, and then the council would decide on that. I think that there could be some room to ask this committee to offer input at that time, before we do like the things like the public meetings, but that is going to be council's decision.
We'll be the first?
Yes.
... to alter.
Yep. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. As I recall, the last time, the last go-around, we used a recruiting firm, which I thought, I thought they did a good job. I mean, that was one of their main focuses was this position, this type of a position. I thought they brought us a lot of great candidates, and we all had an opportunity to read through those resumes and ask questions, and then we had a luncheon where we all got to sit with them, the final four, five candidates, I think, and we had an opportunity to sit and query them about certain things and visit with them, just get an idea of, you know, who they were. And I thought that worked really well, but the other part, I think, was good, was to have, like we did at the Ram Cota, we had all those folks come out to the Ram Cota, and they got to sit with people through the community that got to give us some input too, on how they felt about certain people. And I thought it was a great process, I thought it worked really well, and again, I was pleased with the resumes and the candidates. There were several, I thought, could have done a good job.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions or comments? All right, we'll make it official. Can I get a second to the amendment to appoint Councilman Peters as the liaison?
Second?
Yeah, Lynn made the motion. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And, oh, sorry.
I asked about it.
Okay. So Councilman Jerrons and Councilman Danforth, all those in favor of amending the motion to include Councilman Peters as liaison?
Aye.
Say aye. Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we're on to the main motion, which is the creation of the committee. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor will say aye, opposed, nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Helene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beuler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now we are on to the creation of another committee, and this, the motion is going to be to create a midterm review committee. And just to explain to the council and to the community what this is, this is an idea that I have had for many months, long before I knew that City Manager Mac was going to resign. In 2019, the citizens of Watertown voted to change our form of government from a strong mayor to a city manager form of government. That was implemented in 2021. It cannot be changed according to that vote until 2027, which means we are halfway through in this adoption of a new form of government. And the citizens of Watertown overwhelmingly voted for that form of government, and they want it to succeed. I think council wants it to succeed. One of the best ways that I think of how to make it succeed is to take some time at this halfway point. and they want it to succeed. I think council wants it to succeed. One of the best ways that I think of how to make it succeed is to take some time at this halfway point and take a look at it. What have we done right? What could we be doing better? And again, I'm going to use myself as an example. It's Watertown's first city manager, but I'm the first mayor that had to work with the city, with the city manager. I'm the first non-mayor that had those powers. And if I'm doing something incorrectly, if I'm overstepping my bounds or understepping my performance, I want to, I want the community to know about that. Not only for myself, but also for any mayor that comes later. I know that there are certain things that we could be doing better. I believe that we can make this form of government stronger. And the goal is just to make Watertown stronger. And I'm going to ask to basically create an independent board. So it will still report back to council. I would like to appoint Councilman Shuddy as the liaison. And if you're asking why I have appointed Councilman Peters and Councilman Shuddy, there's a couple of different reasons. Councilman Jurens is very active on the Commercial Lake District, and these are the only two councilmen who I know are going to be here in a year. And it's also the only mayor that I can guarantee is going to be here in a year. So I want people on these committees who are going to be able to carry this knowledge through into the, up into the future years. That's why I asked these two to be the liaisons to that. So the idea is to create an independent, and by independent, I don't mean they don't have the power to enact any changes or anything. But what I want them to do is gather information. I want them to have the ability to talk with city staff. I want city staff to be able to come and express what they think could be done better for the future of Watertown. And that means possibly, you know, if they saw something with the administration, they can offer that because, and they would have absolutely no fear that what they are saying to this group can get back to anybody that could make their life at work less desirable. But I also want them to be able to say what they see that the council and elected officials could be doing better, or what could, what has been being done well. And again, the idea is just to let people offer their input. And on this one, I would, you know, Councilman Danforth said it well. It's like, in this case, I want people who are close to it, who have seen it implemented and at work. I want them to be able to offer their input because we want this to succeed for Watertown and we're halfway through. Let's make the second half even better than the first half as far as making this happen. So with that idea, what I would like to do is I would like to invite every councilman to be able to appoint one person to this committee. Several years ago, I think it was six years ago, when the Home Rule Charter was, was considered, each councilman had two. I don't want to make the board that big. However, of course, I also want them to be inviting, I want them to interview each one of us. I want them to interview people in the community, people on that Home Rule Charter Committee from years ago. And the idea is just, like I said, gain knowledge, knowledge is power, and it will just make Watertown better. And that's my goal. We have a wonderful opportunity right now to make sure that we're doing things the way that we should. And if we need a slight course correction, this committee would help us get to that. So that, that is the intent. I will say I have talked to a couple people to just gauge their interest in it. I would like to say one name is Kyle Lalum, who was on the board for the Home Rule Charter revision. And he has agreed that he would like to be on it. So there might be more, but I wanted to invite each councilman to have that ability as well. You don't have to if you don't want to, but you're more than welcome to. So anyway, with that, I would like a motion to create the midterm review committee. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters, and I apologize, council, for going on quite some time about that. So, and the, just to talk about timeline, this one is going to be a little bit more free. I don't want it to last more than, it in my mind, it should be done before we're doing the hardcore recruit, hardcore vetting of the final prospects. And that is because with that, with the knowledge that we gain, perhaps we will have better questions to ask those candidates for the, for the appointment to city managers. So that would be the timeline. The reason why I can't say a timeline on that is because I don't know how long it's going to take a recruiting firm or anybody else to go out and get candidates. So it might be a few months. I really don't want it to last longer than the end of February, before they get back to council with some kind of report. And they would give us the report, give us the report. And then council would then be able to deliberate and see if we can do better. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, being it's football season, any good team at halftime, they evaluate what's working, what's not working. You even see the best of quarterbacks, they're watching the, you know, the game film and looking at, analyzing themselves and what, what's, how they did and what didn't work or worked. So I just see that as, this as opportunity for us to, to build on our previous, our first three and a half years because there's, there's good things that have gone on. There's, is there anything we can correct and fix and, and learn from? So this, by all means, is trying to build and, and learn and, like you say, gather information. So we can just even better, better move forward from where we're at, you know, finish this, this time we've been given, this, in this City Manager Form of Government, to really make sure we, we do well in the second half, if you will.
Thank you. Any, Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, could you provide a list of the people that were originally on that Home Rule Charter?
Yes, gladly. I don't, I don't have them off the top of my head. I know quite a few of them, but...
Yeah, I mean, somewhere there's a list of those people. It'd be nice to know who those all are.
Yeah, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Motion is to create the committee with Councilman Shuddy as the liaison and with appointments and just council. Ideally, if you could get an appoint, you know, a name to me, let's say, if, if you could get one by the end of the week, great. But, you know, I want you to be able to choose the person that you want. Councilman Tupper?
What do you, you know, so when we're going out there choosing people, what do you anticipate? How many meetings or timeline, or are they going to meet once a week?
I will leave that largely up to them, but I am going to direct them that they will likely have to splinter off because there might be quite a few interviews that are going to be happening with this. And one of the things that I was thinking of, like, I want, I want staff to be able to offer input. And some of them might not be, I, some of them might not be comfortable giving their testimony to a full committee, but if they could give it to one or two people, or if the committee can appoint maybe an impartial third person that could take that testimony and take it up to the committee is. So I don't know exactly how many meetings, but I want them, I want to encourage them to do it right and gather information to make us stronger.
You've visited like one meeting a week though, probably, or?
Probably.
Yeah.
All right. Any further questions or conversation? The motion is to create the committee with Councilman Shuddy as the liaison. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. I'm going to just be on my soapbox once again. Shop local. It's very important. You support all sorts of people, including every single service the community provides you as a city, because this is how we fund our government. So it helps everyone in Watertown when you shop local. Any other further announcements? Interim city manager, do you have anything to report? Will we be having a work session on Monday to discuss the capital, council priority projects?
Yes, that was still the plan. So as long as all of the council is in favor of that, we'll, we'll dive into that. And then it looks like we'll be adding the engineering standards discussion as well to that.
Okay. Yeah, what time is that?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
In the past, we've had it at the police department. I would like to probably move it back here to city council chambers. I think it just has the ability to share and to tape is way easier. I know IT appreciates it, so...
I would be fine with that.
Yep. So that's probably what we'll do.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for the good of the council? We have no reason to